Mr. Brick, if you want to leave us in invocation.
Oh, everyone please stand. Dear Lord, we thank you for a beautiful Wednesday morning. We thank you for bringing us to this point in our day and this point in our lives.
Yes, sir.
Stay with us today as we try to get some things solved. And watch over our families, watch over all of our citizens in Scott County, and watch over our students in school. They're in SOLs today. And watch over their faculties. In Jesus' name we pray.
Jesus.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Mr. Dinges.
District one, Mr. Jeter.
Here.
District two, Ms. Glover.
Here.
District three, Mr. Steen.
Here.
District four, Mr. Brick.
Here.
District five, Mr. Castile.
Here.
District six, Mr. Manus.
Here.
And at large, Ms. Addington.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Good deal. Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? Are there any additions?
Mr. Chairman, we have one adjustment. Mr. Kilgore will not be able to be here to give his report for economic development for the 14th.
14th.
He has to be moved to the June meeting.
Any other changes? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll amend that.
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. The amended agenda is... Oh, everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Sorry, it's been a little bit since we've been here. Has everyone been able to look over the amendments for both the April 2nd and the April 14th meeting? Are there any additions, changes, amendments of any sort? No? Do I have a motion to approve both?
I take that motion to approve those.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Everybody vote my way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. All right, next is citizens' expression. I have a little bit here to read. Citizens' expression is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from in the county, and/or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike, and mind our five-minute time. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered at... By the board will be considered after we close citizens' expression. This morning, we have Bobby Powers, who's signed up to be first for citizens' expression. If you would come up, Bobby.
Good morning, Board. I formally submit this complaint regarding the unprofessional and retaliatory remarks made by board member Stephanie Addington during March's Board of Supervisors meeting. During her public comment, Ms. Addington directly targeted me, a private citizen stating that some people should pay their taxes. These statements were wholly inappropriate, unprofessional, and I believe to constitute an abuse of office. They appear to be intended to silence a lawful citizen's participation, discourage and intimidate the general public from exercising their First Amendment rights. Specifically, I request the following actions be taken: A formal investigation into the statements made by Ms. Addington; disciplinary action or censor for the behavior unbecoming a Board of Supervisors member; A formal public apology for Ms. Addington for using her position to target private citizens; Clear policies established preventing county officials from using public meetings to attack citizens critical of county operations. Public officials are expected to uphold the highest standards of professionalism, fairness, and accountability. Speaking of accountability, I was made aware of the possible illegal behavior involving inspired inspection stickers for several county trash trucks. I emailed those pictures along with the information about a wreck on Blackwater, Tuna. I don't know if you can show them on the screens today. I asked for them to be shown.
If you have any pictures, you're more than welcome to email them to the board or pass out.
I did. I emailed them to Tina earlier yesterday, day before yesterday. Along with possible death devices being removed from the county trash trucks as well. I included what I... Oh, I've lost track. I also made... I was also made aware that the lead wreck was not reported and no accident report was filed. I believe the employee driving that vehicle was terminated and legal representation has been retained. Why were the stickers expired in '24 or not updated? Either money for the maintenance on the truck was not budgeted for or it was misapplied. And if that's the case, why was that not remedied in 2025? Why were funds not set aside and budgeted for the maintenance of these trucks in 2025 and this mistake caught in 2025? When I suggested in February's meeting to Ms. Starnes that the county employees be paid twice a month instead of once, she said another position would have to be created to do that much payroll. And when I suggested her assistant, Bill Dinges, to do it, she said that was ludicrous. That was her word, ludicrous. If you can't do accounting, Mr. Dinges, how can you be expected to maintain the financial budget of the entire county? If you can't keep the maintenance records on the trucks correct, how are we expected to trust you to run the county? You've been over that department for how many years, Mr. Dinges? And the concept of inspection stickers aren't new to you, right? The money that went to maintain these trucks need to be looked at. The cost of the tow trucks having come out to retrieve that trash truck costs the county money. Insurance liabilities, everything needs to be looked at. I have to urge the board today to look into these matters before appointing anyone into the county administrator position to ensure the highest standards in the county administration. Addressing the taxes, we need to trim the fat first. We pay the taxes to support enrollment of children from Tennessee. Yes, the state provides supplemental funding for their attendance, but what is the percentage that county residents are paying to keep Tennessee children in attendance in Scott County? We could cut the litter control position and dog catcher position and assign those duties to our deputies. Instead of bringing the prisoners over from the Duffield jail to the Southland Court for court hearings, we could do it online. The fat has to be trimmed. The online audit states that they found four material weakness findings and one noncompliance material findings between pages 153 through 156, but those pages aren't online. I'm requesting a full copy of the audit along with the management referral letter they submitted. And the county will see by each one of your votes if you are loyal to the betterment of Scott County or loyal to Bill Dinges. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Starnes. Peggy Tice, I'll leave you here next.
Good morning, Peggy Tice from Snowflake Road. And we're on here, it's complaining time again, about dirt roads and dirt roads are what they are, and they're hard on vehicles and buses. And with spring and summer coming on, we'll be calling VDOT for dust control and bushes. And but we want to thank VDOT for all the help that they do for us. And I need, I probably need an update on the many miles of dirt roads in Scott County, because I've been saying 250 miles in Scott County, and I've been saying that for a year or so. I probably need an update on that. And I hope and pray that Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Terry Kilgore, is working on getting more money for dirt roads. And I want to thank you all for all that you all, the hard work that you all do. And keep Snowflake Road on a six-year plan. And y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Starnes.
It's a pleasure.
Blake Lawson.
Morning. I'm Blake Lawson. Live on Frailly Town Road, Duffield, Virginia. My address is 669 Haxton on Frailly Town, and I'm right there where the bridge closure is. My biggest concern is, is I'm coming to you all to keep the bridge closed. Our whole community, I talk to everybody that is in direct correlation, that lives directly on the road, they do not want it open as well. It has cut down on drugs, it's kept our community safe. We don't have all the ignorance mischief that we had when the bridge was open. Like, for example, I had a lot of people come flying by my property. I've had them try to drift a curve. They've knocked out the back glass of my car. I've had drunk drivers coming through. I've been hit standing on the edge of the road and actually had to jump over the bank. I've had people break into my house and destroy completely everything that's in my house and have to rebuild it. We've had people come by the house, put the bird, just yell, fuss, cuss, everything, just because they're high, they're drunk, whatever. Since the bridge has been closed, and I could keep going on with things that's happened over and over and over. Because we've had to deal with the detectives, and I've had to call the cops a few times. And we've had a lot of problems down through there. But I've talked to every single person that's been on the road that lives there or has a piece of a arm that joints it. They don't want it open either. It's become safer. We actually don't have no traffic. The roads have dramatically dropped, especially on our side. We've had zero problems. You don't have people walking by. You don't have just all the times of the night, people coming, making droppings, pickups, things like that, going up, jiggling, door knocking. Don't have to worry about none of that stuff anymore. It has become a lot safer. And I've got names of everybody that is directly on our road. The only person that said it didn't really matter to him was Dakota Pearson. He said it mattered because he's got access to both sides. But he says the biggest thing is, is that his trailer, he has to bring it and turn it on my side. That's it. But every single person on our road that lives directly on it does not want it, except for one I did not get to talk to. And I couldn't get off of her. But out of that, ten houses, ten of eleven, or eleven, ten of the eleven houses that's there, they don't want it. So it's become a lot safer. I have a two-year-old daughter. It's my biggest concern. I'll do what I can to protect her. I've had a lot of people, just me pulling up into my driveway, parked in my driveway, cuss me out just because I'm trying to get into my driveway. Just people don't realize actually how bad that place is whenever the bridge was open. I've been there going on 11 years. So I've seen the changes, all the way up toward the bridge has finally been closed. The big differences. So you've got the good and the bad. I've seen both. I got to see years of it. But the biggest, our ways, you know, everybody outside of the community, they may want it open. That might be their shortcut. Went on for two and a half years, you ain't had no problems. They've been driving that, and it ain't hurting none. What have we had in those two and a half years? Safety. Ain't had to worry about it. We've had people actually come through, drift a curve, run off into my yard. We've had drunk drivers flip over the fence with their own property lines. We've had people try to jump the bridge. They freaked. We've had people drifting the curves and dead center the bridge before as well, and toward the high beams that come right to the middle of the toll. So there's been all kinds of stuff that's happened. The biggest thing is, you know, you don't never know. You're out there and somebody's coming flying by on a dirt road, gravel road, they can be able to stop. My two-year-old daughter does not understand the concept of a road at this moment. And neither does all the other small kids over there. I have two brothers, the youngest one between me, between me and my youngest, seven years. So I've had him over at the house since he was a little kid. So since I've lived there, we've had kids. I've had to fuss, I've had to stop people. I've had people throw beer bottles as they come around through there. I've had people throw out trash, knowing they were right there. I don't want you to say that. People don't have no respect for anything. If they would slow down, we're about it. But they're not going to, because I've been there for 11 years, and I've seen the difference. Also, she's talking about VDOT. Our state maintenance is not, there'd be anything coming. We might have had one truck come through and actually just straight. I've got great neighbors. If it wasn't for my neighbors using their own personal equipment, their own money, everything else to help Dakota Pearson, then my road would be twelve pieces. Because it doesn't matter if we called and complained, whatever, they do not if they come and help us. We're for government. And with the bridge closed, hopefully we can stay that way. We don't have to worry about the drugs, and our whole community can stay safe.
Time's up, Mr. Lawson.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
One of the concerns is about people like over in the purchase area getting to Duffield, maybe use that road to go to work. Is there alternatives to that? Or is that normally what they do when that bridge was open?
Whenever the bridge was open, they would come through there. But ever since then, they've went Purchase Ridge, turned on the Fatsville, and it's three minutes, tops more. So it's not that great of a difference. Now, I can see if it's like 10, 15 minutes, but it's only like three minutes. And it's all blacked out. They can go a lot faster. And I actually stick to the road.
One other thing, if a road dead ends, it changes in our ordinance as far as the 911 system is addressing. So it's possible that we'd have to name that, rename that road, like Frailly Town South, Frailly Town North, or something like that. And it would be a lane instead of a road. Road indicates that it connects to other roads. So that might be some inconvenience to the people on the road if we were to, or if the board goes that route.
Right.
Just FYI on that.
Yeah, that's right. But like I asked all these people, I said, when I came up to them, I said, "Do you want the bridge open or do you want it closed?" And they can tell me which one they want. Because if they didn't want it open, I was going to put it down and say, "This person didn't want it open." But these are all people that is directly tied to the road. So they live right on the road where they have farm and that connects right to the road. So they're always on the tractors and trailers and stuff like that. So that is the biggest thing, is I want to get the people actually to live right there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to come?
I got a meeting, not thirty minutes, that's what, y'all? Hi, I'm Casey Fiermonte. I'm Scott County 4-H agent. I've been here for about 10 years now, and you all have supported me the entire time, so I'm here to say thank you. Usually I bring my bundles of joy that are graduating. However, this year, I just ran out of time to connect with them. But we do have some youth in Scott County that have been involved in 4-H that are graduating this year. There's two that's been extremely involved, and then one that's been like, yeah, you know, she's been involved, but not like as much as the other. So anyway, I'm going to give you a real quick recap of 2024 of the youth that I was able to serve with the support that you all give me each year. So last year, I served 1,802 youth, and that's roughly like 46.5% of the population that's registered as under 18 in Scott County. And by serving, that means that they've received at least six hours of programming time. And so during in-school stuff, we, and by I, I mean there's we. So me and Lisa Berry, who's the FNET, and she focuses on like food safety and food health for youth. So we tag team. So this is under the 4-H umbrella. So we served 1,371 youth in school and then 385 youth for after school. There were 16 youth involved in clubs and 299 youth for summer camps or specialty camps. This year, or last year, rather, 4-H did have some international experiences. I had a family that hosted an international exchange student from Chile. And then I also had two 4-H members that were able to travel to the Dominican Republic to do service learning projects. As far as national and state experiences, there was a Scott County member that was selected from Virginia or from Scott County to represent Virginia in Atlanta, Georgia, at the National 4-H Conference that they do down there. We also, there were 20 delegates from Virginia that went to Washington, DC to be representatives of Virginia. And out of those 22 of them were from Scott County. There were two kids that I had to qualify for a national contest in Dallas, Texas. And when they qualified and we went there, one of them took, it was a team-based competition. One got seventh place and the other got 10th place. Just going through all the highlights here. And district involvement, I do have two kids that volunteer at the Southwest Virginia 4-H Center on a district level where they are like teen representatives for our district, and they plan events. And last, alumni involvement. So this past year in 2024, we had an alum that was selected out of 24 college students nationally to be a representative at a national conference that took place in DC for 4-H. And I've had alum that have been working at the 4-H Center during the summer. And then this past year, one of our alum took on a board of directors position at the Southwest Virginia 4-H Center. I'm really big in my programming with trying to get them specifically engaged in taking on these leadership roles so that one day, you know, they'll want to be where you all are. And so I try to like educate them in that way. That's about all that I have. Thank you again. Sorry that I don't have kids here with me because they're more fun to listen to, but you know, I appreciate it here.
Good morning. I'm Kristy Farmer. I'm here today representing the town of Neganon and the Special Adventure Committee. I'm here to ask for a donation for our annual Fourth of July event. The amount of donations we'd like to have would be $1,000. This year, we are making a major change to our Fourth of July. Typically, it's an all-day event from 11:00 a.m. till fireworks at night. After reviewing past several years, we just don't get the people out all day. So we are starting the parade at 4:00 p.m. and then running everything consecutively to hopefully keep everybody there to have something to do. And then we'll end with the fireworks show around 9:45. That's all?
Thank you.
Do you need this one?
Yes. Anyone else?
Good morning, Board. I'm Catherine Speller, and I've grown cats and dogs for 25 years. I'm retired now. Lifetime animal lover. Wanted to give you a little background about, I guess, the relationship with Bill Dinges and Animal Control and me. After I moved into Scott County, it started with four horses left joint in my property, and the owner never came back to feed or water. And my husband is as much of an animal lover as I am. So he had a barn full of squirt rail hay, and he started feeding the horses. And I called every week trying to get something down. And when there was a dead horse in the field, John Puckett finally got somebody up there, and they moved him into Russell County. But then it was all over Gate City. Like, my husband was the villain for feeding the horses, the hay. And then next, was in 2022, a neighbor was written a junky trailer beside of me, and he moved off and left three dogs locked in that trailer. And we could see one of them through the end window and barking and barking. So I started calling, calling. I tried to go the legal route instead of going and breaking a window and stealing a dog, which I've been accused of doing, stealing people's dogs. But I called and called, and Jake came up and put a note on the door. And I told him, I said, "They've been gone five days. They've never come back." So I got the owner of the trailer up there to unlock the door. I had pictures of where they had eaten linoleum off the floor, the black toilet that they had been drinking out of, how bony they were. And so for six months, I would get up and get dressed and come to the courthouse for court. Jake would tell me when it was going to be, when it was going to be. And I have, then finally, I have a text from him saying that I would have to be subpoenaed. He wanted my address so he could send a subpoena. I got him my address. Well, I waited, I called back, called Bill Dinges. He said, "That case has already been heard." So they went, you know, instead of me being able to show my pictures and testify about what the boy had done, the case was heard without me. So I've not had very good rapport with Animal Control and Bill Dinges. And as far as the guy coming to my house after I spoke about his animals behind the Snowflake store, and then Michelle, after I speak, then somebody, Bill says, "Didn't you have him at your house for a job?" Well, two years earlier, he had given the lady I stayed with the number and said, "If y'all ever need any work done, call me." Well, I did call him. And he came up there and saw it was really work, busted up a sidewalk, and he did about 50 mile an hour on my driveway. I never saw him again. But that was two years ago. And as far as them watching YouTube and watching this live, I don't think that that couple was watching the meeting. But, and both of them said that Jake did come up there to their house after the meeting, and I don't think they had any reason to lie about it. But then when I went to talk to Kyle and Dan about them coming to my house, they even brought up how my husband, my evil husband, had fed those horses some hay. So, you know, that happened 10 years ago. But now, today, I'm here because I've had four different people. They always contact me. And I need to know where I can go to see what's on public record that goes on at the shelter. Because I got, last week, I got a message that two dogs were put to sleep for space, but there was two empty kennels at the shelter. And then I got another message from somebody else and said, "Not only those two, but then six more." And then I said, "Well, are you meaning those two and then four more as a total of six? Are you meaning two and then six as a total of eight? Do you know what the total was that was killed last week, Bill?"
No.
Is there any way I could find out?
Sure.
Where do I go to find that out?
We could ask Animal Control. They keep records on.
But there's no public records?
There would be a public record.
Where would I go to see that public record?
You could FOIA that record, and we could get the information to you.
I could do what?
FOIA, Freedom of Information Act.
Okay.
Yeah, just ask for it, basically. And we'll, there's a process that we provide you that information.
Well, and I also got a message that of the dogs that were killed, there's been dogs there for a year that weren't killed. But, and they, these were friendly dogs. So I need to get that information.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take this right now as a FOIA request.
Okay.
Try to get you that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Anyone else have comments?
Jeremy Baker, Moose Creek. I asked a lot of people up there, I believe, about the tax increase, and they all wanted me to ask you all, please, try to figure out some way to keep them from having to raise taxes on. And as far as VDOT, them guys have done a good job on Moose Creek, getting the culverts and all the side dishes cleaned out. I hope they don't get in trouble with the EPA. Maybe this new man in Washington will take care of the EPA and get rid of them. But anyway, if y'all want to help VDOT, I would suggest that you contact the lady, the lieutenant governor that's running for governor, Mrs. Seager's. And I can't pronounce that other lady's name, running on the other ticket, but either one of them, if you see them. Jump on them and tell them, put that on a priority and get it restored to back the way it was back in old days. Because we know how VDOT took care of their roads back when they had the money and the equipment to take care of it. And, I mean, I think they're doing, what they working with, they do a good job. And the contractors that they, well, I ain't going to know. But anyway, I think, I'm going to throw this in. I think Bill Dinges would be a great asset to our county, and he would help save money with this job. Because, well, y'all know more about that than I do, about cutting back salaries and stuff. So, anyway, they all want to put in my good word. Only how did your daddy and mama, they were good friends of mine. Thank you all. I still got two minutes to hire.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Anyone else? All right, that's it. We'll close, public committee. We had several actions come up from this. Ms. Farmer requested a Fourth of July.
Yeah.
I mean, the next meeting will be in June. There's still plenty of time to prepare and maybe, if we can, line up to make sure there are additional.
Right.
Yeah, let's find that out and let's see how much we've got left in there. Mr. Lawson for closing Freely Town Road. Do we want to proceed with a public hearing on that matter or...
Some discussion.
Yeah.
I did have some comments on that last time. I don't have the dates, but as I recall, there were no requests for police assistance during the period he's referring to. I think there's one, maybe one person that was arrested for intoxication at the bridge. But other than that, I checked the 911, there had been no request for police assistance.
For what dates is that?
I think it's in the minutes. I don't, I don't have it. I can check back, but I don't, it's during the period he's referring to.
Mr. Baker, if I do that, I can probably just give you an update about the state of things. About that, perhaps that would be a little more valuable to you than before you take any action.
Okay. So is everyone okay to wait until the VDOT reception to take any action on that? Okay. Peggy Tice and then Bobby Patterson. Is there anything that we wanted to come out of that?
I'll go ahead and address the inspection stickers. That's a legitimate concern, if assistance sees one of our trucks with an outdated inspection sticker. That's my responsibility. I do delegate that to the, as far as keeping up with it, to our solid waste manager and the truck drivers. When they do their morning pre-trip inspection, should notice that. So when that came to my attention, I wrote a memo reiterating that process to my solid waste supervisor and the truck drivers to make sure they take note of that if they see a sticker coming up to alter the route that day to go give an updated sticker. A memo of that sort is our normal directive-type communications, especially when talking to whole sub-department or department. All of our trucks currently that are on the road have updated inspection stickers. We do have two that has been under repair. One of them went out in April and the other one has a sticker that will need to be gotten when it gets back on the road. But a lot of times that will occur, we'll have a truck, it goes out and the sticker expires. Not making excuses, it's just one of those things that when it's dropped to my attention, you know, we have this...
Where do drivers stop to get a sticker?
We have to, currently, we have to go to Powers Garage on the other side of Duncan, which is, you know, out there pretty good. We don't have a lot of opportunities for our packer trucks. Our roll-off trucks, we can go to the bus garage. They can't get the packer trucks in the garage up there and so they can't do the stickers wrong.
And that's just because they need larger space to do it?
Yes. They're, they're like 13 feet tall.
Yeah.
And, you know, they just don't, the bus garage is made for buses. As far as the DEF components, we had two trucks, the 2014, 2018, that we couldn't keep running. And after several attempts of changing components and, and working on the DEF, we had to delete it just to get the trucks running until we can figure out what is needed to make them run with the DEF system. Now, the components on the truck was not removed. It's merely the computer telling it to use those components. Once we figure out the fix for it, we'll, it's reversible and we'll do it again. But, you know, you're just making, we were making the decision of whether to park those trucks and not pick up the trash or do that and be able to operate while we find out. There's a number of, I'm not a mechanic, but there's a number of issues that happens with the DEF systems. It's not exclusively a Scott County problem. It's, you can talk to just about any truck driver out there about some issues with that. But it's a reversible thing and we have eight trucks, you know, it's two of them that we're talking about. And it was just to keep them on the road.
How much did you all spend before you decided to do that?
I don't have an exact total number, but it was, the mechanic said they had attempted several attempts and it was like $4,000 a time. So it's not, and we, we went through a series of fixes that didn't seem to help. So, but we have, the other trucks, you know, the new truck, the 20, their systems are working fine thus far. We went through the evolution of DEF on those trucks. The systems have gotten better over the years, been more reliable, but, you know, some of the older trucks, not so much. She mentioned the wreck and no report. When I was informed of the wreck, that the truck had went off the road and into a ditch, I asked, is, was there anybody else involved? And there wasn't. Was there any injury? There were no injuries reported. So we focused on getting a hold of the wrecker service to get them out. There was also need, no need for traffic control. It wasn't on one of the main highways or anything like that that would cause people to have to put themselves in harm's way to get around it. So that's why, well, I do an incident report for every incident, not just accidents, that I have on file that is available. Any questions on that?
Can I make a suggestion? Just throw this out there. When it is inspection time and the drivers do see that their inspection stickers are getting ready to expire, is it possible to let the mechanic take the truck and get it inspected as well as doing an inspection on hand himself? He could drop the truck there and make sure that it's functioning correctly, driving properly and do a second inspection, like a check of balance system?
That, that's, that's possible. You know, a lot of times our mechanics haven't to drive lately because we're down some drivers. And time-wise, it's more efficient for the driver to go out. And these are CDL drivers, you know, they're, they had the test on doing an inspection for a truck to get their CDL license. So they're professionals and can tell that. But there may be cases. I think there's one of them that he was working on. He'll be taking the date. I think he was going to get it fixed today, so he will be taking it, you know, on the situation. The key thing is for the drivers to note that while it's coming and, you know, be a month ahead and alter the route, which sometimes that's tough. I mean, they're, it's six days a week just picking up the trash, but that's something that we, we gotta do.
Anything else coming out of public expression?
Ms. Powers or Ms. Tice asked about the number of miles of roads. I think it's 256, if Mr. Semple can confirm that, but I think that is 256. And Ms. Dillard, Ms. C is the one that would do the FOIA request that Mr. Dengus mentioned. So you, well, you said it already, you want to make sure that happened.
Yeah. If we're asking for about those, that's fine.
So, are y'all through there?
Yes.
Okay. You said we was down drivers up there on the crash trucks. When do you think that we can get some more drivers? Because I know mechanic, he's been helping drive and trying to keep the trucks up too. I mean, how many drivers will we down?
We're down two. One of our drivers had stopped driving because of medical issue. I think I talked to y'all about that. And, and then another one was let go. So we're, we're working out when we can hire. I did hire a driver just last, last week, I think, two weeks, that has been doing good. So, you know, as, as soon as we can, and, you know, we might talk a little bit about that and the budget, because it's, some of it is budget issue on whether or not I have that position or not to do. So, yeah, it's, and of the, the one that we let go, we're going through a grievance process that is entitled to, and I don't want to replace that job until that grievance, grievance issue is resolved. But hopefully that'll leave within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. All right. That's everything. We'll move on to public hearings?
No.
We don't have one. I'm sorry. Underfinished business, the six-year plan, Mr. Powers, talk.
Thank you, sir. Okay, good morning. So I'm on the agenda to talk about the six-year plan and since I'm here, if it's okay with the board, I'll just kind of just give a little bit of update too. Got to get through things as quick as we can here. So trying to get in my mind, I guess, the order of things here that's coming up to talk about. So I'll just go ahead and touch on the, on the bridge there, Freely Town. So the, the bridge that was existing there becomes structurally deficient. It was identified a few years ago and it came up and was approved for replacement in the funding. However, as the funding occurred, the funding was not until fiscal year 26. So we, I was trying to think back, some of you were here and part of the previous board. We had discussions about the top of the bridge to put back there. And so in order to reduce having big footprint and give rideaway greater impacts there, the decision was made to go back with a one-lane structure similar to the one that was there. But the structure would be built such that it would not have any weight limits on it and it would be legal, legal load on it, but it would just be one lane wide. So our design staff for the district has been proceeding in that, that direction to design that based upon what was given as a construction advertisement time of 2026. I recently checked on the status of the bridge and I was told by our district bridge engineer that they were going to require some temporary easements in order to be able to construct it. And those are obtained from, by our rideaway division, which that would be done, he said that phase would start in July of this year in order to obtain those easements. So with that, what I'm hearing today, I intend to go back and have discussions with him about that there's some desire not supposed to have the, the bridge remain closed. And the process that would have to occur with that, as you mentioned, for one, would have to entail a public hearing by the county to allow an advertisement to be taken place to receive comments from all sides. And then, of course, we would have to have a decision weigh-in by this board about your desire to, you know, how to move forward with that. As I said, I need to go back and have some discussion because I'm not completely sure of all the impacts of, of just doing that at this time because we have been in the design phase. Now, I don't, I don't want anyone to take this as panic or anything like that, but I will say that I have seen in my years of tenure with VDOT that different things can happen with projects. And if there's already been a commitment going forward to that and then there's been funds expended, that, you know, sudden reverse on decision on that, that a locality may be asked to contribute, you know, money back toward the expenses that have already occurred as part of that design process. I don't know that that's for certain. Those are unique situations, but if you understand, those are questions that I need to ask if we, if we go forward with that. The other question I think that comes into play is, and I'm somewhat familiar with the road, is whether or not we're talking about the abandonment of the, just the bridge or the entire roadway. So I guess that would be a question that, that we would have too. If we were just talking about an abandonment of the bridge, we would have to have some permanent means worked out of having like a turnaround established at the, where the bridge is now. I think that we're kind of doing some temporary things that are there now. But roadway is limited, so something would have to be worked out to have a formal turnaround. Not saying it'd have to be a big cul-de-sac or anything like that, that there has to be a dedicated spot put out for us to turn around there with that. So if, if it's something that you want to act on today to get a, to have a public hearing for it, I don't discourage that at all. I think that what I'm just thinking about as I'm standing here is that if it is possible to stop the reconstruction of the bridge, that we're gonna have to probably get some decision at some point pretty quickly before we actually go into a rideaway phase where that they may be paying people for temporary easements and so forth there with that. And that's things that I, I will do my homework on. I will be back here in June in the next part of the, of the six-year plan, but I can try to get that information before then and then also try to get it to Mr. Dengus as quickly as I know that, so that he can disperse that information to you. Does that sound okay? I'm sorry I don't have all the answers, but it's each one of these are a unique, unique situation. But I was trying to illustrate the point by talking about the expenses, that there's a lot of questions that have to be asked at this point.
All right. Is the board okay with taking on that until the next meeting? Mr. Patterson can get us some more information back on it.
Don't ask your questions.
decision at some point pretty quickly before we actually go into a roadway phase where that they may be paying people for temporary easements and so forth there with that. And that's things that I, I will do my homework on. I will be back here in June in the next part of the, of the six-year plan, but I can try to get that information before then and then also try to get it to Mr. Dinges as quickly as I know that, so that he can disperse that information to you. Does that sound okay? I'm sorry, I don't have all the answers, but it's each one of these are a unique, unique situation, but the, but I was trying to illustrate the point by talking about the expenses that there's a lot of questions that have to be asked at this point.
All right, is the board okay with taking on that until the next meeting? Mr. Allen, can you get us some more information back on it?
Don't ask your questions.
Do you understand it? Like?
I guess that is a question that I have. Are you talking about just the bridge or are you talking about wanting the entire road through there?
Just the bridge or from my mailbox to manager's mailbox, just whatever would be the easiest part.
Do you own the area that we would be talking about, have to try to come up with a turnaround?
I own the left side of the road down here. So I would have a section of it, yes. And then there's another filler that almost stops it, prompts the road through there.
You understand what I'm talking about there, would have to have something formalized for it? Okay, all right. Okay. Well, I will certainly ask as many questions as I can air with it and see what answers I get back and I will report that back to you. Okay? Sound good? Okay, so on other items other than six-year plan that I will touch base on for you is I did give you a little report here of some main items that I thought were important to bring to you there. So the first part of that report is entitled Permanent Repair Sites. As we all know, we had a flood in February and we had a lot of small sites debris cleanup. We've accomplished the bigger part of that. And then we had nine sites that need to be, had permanent repairs. And there was a declaration made that we could get reimbursement FEMA and FHWA on qualified roads for the repairs. And VOD has been working with those agencies in order to try to get everything set up with the documentation so that we can do that. We have a limited time when they give their approval with a, with a declaration for us to be able to get a hundred percent reimbursement on repairs. And by instruction from our central office, we've been ordered to try to get those repairs done within that window timeframe so that we can get that reimbursement from those. So we have nine sites here in Scott County that were needing repair. Four of them are in progress up on High Knob, Osborne Ridge, Quarter Bottom, and Ritter Bluff. Two sites have been completed on Angler's Way in Water's Edge and three sites that are waiting for work, two of them on Hunter's Valley and one on Griggs Chapel Road. Okay? We are using a combination of both higher equipment and state forces to be able to accomplish that work and they're trying to get the, those things done. So with that being said, with the timeframes, with the debris cleanup and things that we've had there with that, our crews have been sidetracked from a lot of the normal work that we've had, that we would normally accomplish. And so we admittedly are a little bit behind on regular maintenance work. I know Mr. Skene forwards me at times with orders that folks are a little bit displeased that we've not gotten out and done their work yet. And we, we're trying to do a combination. We, we're totally working on flood stuff for the last couple of months. We're trying to get now to where that we're kind of splitting the time up on the work with the goal of sin being back full swing of performing the routine maintenance work. And so that, not mean trying to make excuses, just given fact with our resources, that's what's, what's been going on, is trying to get that reimbursement. So we, we also, that has affected our ability to start work on our rural rusting projects that we have that we're doing this year. Now, we have gotten approval for it up and we've gotten Ann Cooper Road Phase Two started this week. So we're working there on that. And then as we move along, our goal and hope is to get Eden Hill started in June and then Horton Summit Road in July. So that's some of the schedule. Again, realizing that we're using those same crews to try to get this flood work done and try to get that reimbursement that we have statewide. We've had a lot of expense with both the snow and floods, so department's trying to get back as much money as we can to recoup the costs that we've, we've had. Now, the next part of the report that I provided you are schedules related to our resurfacing this year. These are roads again that are already hardtop roads that we are going back and then doing maintenance on them as part of the resurfacing. We do two types of resurfacing now. We do what we call and classify as latex. Has a term that I use in layman's terms if trying to describe that is that if we've got paved, if you've got paved driveway and you go and get the sealer and put the sealer on the driveway to try to protect it and preserve it, it's very similar to that, but it's just a much thicker kind of solution that we put down. It's got sand and some very fine gravel in it and the asphalt. It usually helps us extend a lot for the roadway, six to seven years beyond white wood without it. It's a less expensive alternative. So we have several of those. Then on the second page that you will see, those are roads that are listed plant mix, that is the regular asphalt overlay that we will be putting down this year as part of the schedule. The latex schedule has started. Contractor that does that is in the area and has already begun work. The plant mix schedule is not begun yet. The contractors that we have for both are pretty limited in this area and so they work district wide. And I think from what I've been sitting on schedule, they're working on some plant mix already over on the interstate and in some of the eastern counties of the district. And so they, they will be here in the coming months to, to take those on. So again, one of the things that we've had to do is that we have to have our roads patched. We don't put latex, the, you can imagine if you had a pothole in your driveway, you don't want to put the, that cover over right through the pothole, it doesn't fill the pothole in. So our crews have also been having to prioritize getting patching done for those as well. Those have come first. We also, as the summer goes along and asphalt plants are still just getting geared up, they've had a few problems in some places there with those, but they're being going. So we will be doing a lot of the regular patching as we go moving off through the summer as well. So that's some of the work that we've got going on. I just threw in a few pictures for you here. This, talking about bridges, the, this was a bridge on Route 622, Sixth Road. It's a bridge deck replacement that our state forces crew did there with that. That's complete. And then just to kind of give you a little picture representative, the, there's two pictures, one relating to High Knob. This is work of repairing that road that is ongoing and also on Osborne Ridge. There, that's work that's been going on, that's flood repair work to restore those. Okay, does anybody have any questions related to any of that before?
On six road, we're going on plan of pavement. There's a pretty big bump there now. And we know we're planning on like breaking that back up even with the pavement on each side.
On each side?
Yeah.
I will check and see that the bridge crew will take care of that, but I'm sure they've got, got a plan. Like I said, a lot of the things we've had, the asphalt plants, we get Kingsport, Norton, Castlewood for the Scott County area and Norton, is Norton got completely opened yet?
Uh, I don't think so.
I don't think they have. And so some of it's been asphalt a little bit, but we'll make sure that it gets done as fast.
Been doing a good job on latex to see that on Beach Grove Road and down in there.
Okay, good.
Rechecked it.
Okay, anything else related to that?
When does that road, they're about to hot knob, you figure we'll be finished, Ty Stu, there a couple of weeks ago, making great improvements on it, you know, what it way it was to way it is now, of course. I know that y'all probably had worked on it two miles or something at the time I was over there.
We putting asphalt down or ditched?
Yep, probably bigger, probably ditted asphalt.
From what I know, that the, the Hot Knob Road, I believe, a lot of that work's been done with the contractors where they, they did the overlays on there with that. I'm sorry, I don't have the information right in front of me. I can check that out and we'll get that related back to you. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Because that's been done by the, the PMD's been doing a lot of that, so I had to find out there for my permanent manager.
There are a couple more roads. That's all the question I've got that I've talked to you before about Highway 65. And I guess I talked to you about 10 months ago where we get to the John Saville monument. Nobody ever fixed the shelter of the roof there and.
We'll get it checked on.
Okay. Then it's a town about our next to Mill Creek and I've caught it in time after time again and it's still water running across the road.
Okay, and I think if I'm remembering correctly, that's one we've got under environmental review right now.
Yeah, you did, someone told me it's third time of the month.
Yeah. We'll check on that one too and get to go there. Derek's back there making notes for me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Ty's had a question about the number of miles unpaved in Scott County. Is that 256?
I actually think that what I was saying, it's 252 is what the number that, that I have.
This is not on the subject of paving, but something I just want you to put back to your mind. If you remember a couple of months ago, residents from Highway 71 from Gate City up to Antioch had requested that double solid lines be put on that road. And you said that the state said quota hadn't been met. And I don't know if that was wrecks or deaths, but we've had another death within the last month. And another lady was, may still be in the hospital, I'm not sure.
She still is?
She still is. So I'm just wondering what their quota is. Is it wrecks? Is it deaths? And how far back does it go? I remember deaths from 71, good friends of mine.
It's, they usually look at that within like a last three year period of time when they looked at, there actually, there isn't any kind of quota. It's like they look at it also from standpoint of sonic distance and things. And then they, they analyze the accident itself to determine if doing closing the passing zone will, you know, improve it. There are different things there. I recall that there were some accidents that when they looked at it, that they told me that occurred like people kind of left in front of others that wouldn't have, you know, mattered whether or not it's closed or not. So I'll bring it to their attention again in the next one.
Speed is a factor at the convenience center and Antioch Church, but as this wreck happened right outside of Gate City, when they hit the double solid, they were passing and hit another one head on. It's, it's, it's dangerous, it really is. Just keep that in mind if you would.
All right. Okay. Anything else or I'll get into the six-year plan portion?
One thing I mentioned out in Holland, I just want to make sure I mention in here as well is that there have been some residents from Antioch and landowners from Copper Creek around 627 down in, down towards Clinchport that are wondering if that can be brought up a little bit and make it a little less susceptible to flooding, especially during the record rate of flood winter we had.
Okay. We've got that down, we'll, we'll review that as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Also, the road, Mr. Manis just got from 23 back up to Copper Creek where the High Trussell Bridge is. Back in the winter, a guy was concerned about slipping over there. I know it's probably a good hundred feet or so drop into the creek.
Guard rail?
A guard rail.
Okay.
And I told him I would try to get some drivers or something, but I didn't think they could get some traction to get up. But yeah, it was busy.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a, take a look at that as well and put that on the guest.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. So if y'all are ready, then I'm gonna jump into the six-year plan part, okay? So you given at your last reading, a list of roads, I think each of you had and asked that we review those and see if they are eligible or, and see what the cost estimates would be for constructing those as rural resting projects. Okay, so I want to clarify just a little bit to start with about the, the six-year plan money that, that we have. So what happens is that our district office, every year, they get the allocation that comes down from, from Richmond. By code of Virginia, I think there's a $25 million allocation that they start splitting up of my office that had unpaid roads statewide based upon the amount of mileage that is had and the other factors that with Scott County, with the mileage that we, that we have is like second, third statewide in the allocation that we receive. So they get the, they get that allocation down. And then you have to realize too, that when we do the six-year plans and put the monies that are on those at the time, we are putting those in like it's today's money. We try to look at them out reasonably like we can, as much as we can, but like a road that is construct, will be added and it's going to be six years at the tail end of the plan, it's somewhat a guess because we don't want inflation is going to be going through there. Inflation, you know, has been the last year or two has had an impact on us. So then the, the staff that's, takes care of this at the district office, doing all the inputs and everything into the plan, they, they look at updated estimates and data and the first thing they do is they go through and then apply the inflationary factors with the money and, you know, kind of stagger that out as, as we go. So then after that, they apply that to all the projects that are currently into the plan, given, given a guess on what they're going to cost at the time they're going to be built based upon current data. And then what money is left over is then what we have to see if we can add a new, new project or so to the plan. There's been some years that we've seen that we've not been able to add project because the inflationary factors were such that they, the money that we got had to be applied and sometimes that causes like a project to slide out by a year or something like that. So in this case, we were given $427,000 to apply to the last year of the plan as for add a new project or two based on what that we had. So we, we went through and I'm gonna go through the ones that we were given and we looked at Timber Tree Branch. That project is about a half mile long. And again, it's easy, let me say this, it's easy at times, we try to say, okay, so much for my. It's easy at times, we try to say, okay, so much per mile, that kind of thing when we talk about it. But then once we actually look at them, there'd be factors that's out there. The number of pipes that we're going to have to have, trying to do the ditches, deal with any rock that may be in the road. So that can, that can affect the cost of, so, you know, it's difficult to say that it's going to be, you know, so much per mile when it comes down to it. So with Timber Tree, the section that we looked at there was 0.55 miles long. It had a traffic count of 50. And our estimate on that one, in today's terms, was $400,000. Okay? We looked at Dean Hollow Road and the unfinished section is there in between. It's a 0.47 miles. The traffic count is 90. And we are estimating that to be around 425,000. The amount of work that would have to be done there. Okay, then we also, we looked at the next section of Snowflake Road, a Phase Two of it, eight tenths of a mile long. And the estimate that we had on that one is 500,000. Dinges Hollow, which would be a first phase of it, is around nine tenths of a mile. And we have an estimate on it of 600,000. Ford Branch. It is eight tenths of a mile long and a traffic count of 90 on it. And we also have an estimate on it of 600,000.
What did you say the traffic count was on Ford? Dinges Hollow?
Dinges Hollow is 108.
And Snowflake Road?
Snowflake Road, I'm sorry. On the second section of that, our traffic count is 70.
What was the Ford Branch Road?
Ford, Ford Branch is 600,000. And then the last road that I had given is Hail Springs Road. And the traffic count on it was only 20. So it is not eligible to, for unpaid road money for construction. So a couple of things that I would just mention here on placing the money on the plan is that, again, we've got $427,000. We were talking about future money. So if, if we were to select one of the two projects that has 400,000 as the, as the current estimate on it, knowing that inflation's going to have, I would probably recommend to you that we would just put all of that money onto that project right there because by the time it goes to construction, we're talking the year of like 2032, that number's going to increase anyway. So you could add another project on there, but you'd just be putting $27,000 on it would be what you would be doing. Okay? So if you choose one of the others that's there that, that is more than the 427, you can put that on the plan. But you would just need to know that next year, when we do the update, whatever money that we get, we would have to apply the first part of that to funding, to completing the funding of that. And that would push that project out in a year in construction because they must be fully funded before they go to construction. So we put four, so we put 400,000, I'm just gonna round down for my terms, put 400,000 on the road this year, five, or no, four is what we had there. So we put 400,000 on it. And then next year, we would need to put the first 200,000 of whatever we have available on to that project as well to get it fully funded for construction. And then realize that that project would probably be going to construction in 2033 as fully funded rather than in 2032. Does that make sense?
Do you have any idea of what mixture's funding might look like?
Well, the funding is pretty well been, been leveled for what we, what we've seen. They double funded this right now. So I don't know. Again, the thing that we're going on too is that is actually in the Code of Virginia that they've got allocated $25 million for, for this program. So they divvy that out accordingly. So the way that the funding changes is that some of the other counties that they've, that have less unpaid road money, then they're going to get less. But we still are up here saying, so, you know, like some county that may have 10 miles, as an example, if they build, you know, can get a mile of theirs off, then that formula's going to calculate overall in the allocation based upon the mileage. Okay? So.